DATV. And the Greater Dayton Area League of Women Voters present. Meet the candidates. Your chance to learn about the candidates running for office in the November election.
Hello, I am Peggy Berry, a member of the League of Women Voters of the Greater Dayton Area. I am here today with the candidates running for the Dayton School Board. The candidates are William Bailey, Rennie Power, Ken Hayes, William Smith, and Eric Walker. Mr. Bowers was unable to participate today due to a prior commitment. We will start our interviews by giving the candidates one minute to tell us about themselves and why they want to serve on the Dayton School Board. Uh, Mr. Hayes, I will start with you.
Thank you, and thank you to League of Women Voters to hosting this forum. I appreciate having the time to meet with fellow candidates and talk about why we want to be here. For me, uh, my wife and I have two kids who attend DPS as a first and third grader. Uh, I am a teacher. Uh, I teach at Central State University, where I'm the writing program coordinator and the senate chair for the university. Uh, and I think that the skills that I have developed uh, over my career as an educator, uh, and an administrator, make me a really good fit for the school board. And I think that I, I bring a lot to the table, uh, that can add uh, some value to what a lot of people are asking for when I talk to them about what they're looking for in school board members.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
Uh, good morning and thank you for the opportunity. Um, Eric Walker from, uh, right here in Dayton, Ohio, born and raised. Uh, a grad of Dayton Public Schools, Thurgood Marshall High School. Um, have worked for Dayton Public Schools, Triwood Madison Schools, and really seeing the inside of the districts of both. Um, Dayton Public Schools, it, it drove me to run because I have a passion for education, um, as well as accountability and transparency, uh, within our school district and what we are actually providing to the parents of the students that, uh, the district actually serves. Uh, one of the challenges that I see, uh, which really pushed me forward to running is more community involvement inside of the classroom, inside of the building, and adequate pay for not just our teachers, but our parent professionals and bus drivers as well, who actually work right hand with the students as much as the senior level officials within the district. That is why I decided to run for the Dayton Public Schools Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Dr. Bailey.
Hello, I'm William Bailey. Uh, I'm a graduate of Belmont High School, uh, product of DPS. Retired Dayton Police Officer. Uh, and I worked for Samaritan Behavior Health for a number of years doing curriculums and going into different school systems, such as Centerville, Miami'sburg, West Carrollton, Trotwood, Jefferson Township, um, and Vandelia. Uh, I wanted to run because I just seen that we have a basic need in Dayton Public School Systems that I just feel like that, uh, it gets a bad rap and that we can help the school system to just be better. I'm all about the students. Uh, I really want our students to succeed, uh, in the Dayton Public School System. Uh, I want there to be a buy-in for the, uh, educators. And when I say educators for DPS, I mean, not just the teachers, but our janitors, our bus drivers, uh, everyone that, that's involved with our students. So I'm just here to just try to make things better for our students and our community.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Good morning. I appreciate you all for being here and appreciate the time and opportunity. My name is Will Smith. I am a lifelong resident of Dayton. A graduate, proud graduate of Meadowdale High School. I've had two students so far that are in Dayton Public Schools and I'm proud parent of a three-year-old boy who I am eager to send to Dayton Public Schools. So I have a vested interest as well as being someone who has worked in this community as a community organizer and advocate, worked alongside of the different levels from our business community to our, um, our inner-city communities, to our school communities. And as a member currently of the school board, I would love to continue to serve, um, to keep pushing forward some of the things that we've been doing. Um, I know we've had a lot of issues and moving forward through some of the things that not only were caused by COVID, but a lot of the socio-economic things that were exacerbated by COVID and some of the things that were shown because of it. And more importantly, I think the biggest thing for anybody, it has to be about the kids. Every decision that we make has to be done with the kids at the forefront, whether it be from dealing with the community, families, or staff, it has to be about how does it help the kids.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. Okay, I am going to ask each of you, each candidate, the same question. You will have two minutes to speak to that question. And then I will move to the next candidate and give them two minutes to respond. Dr. Bailey, I'm going to ask you first, and that is describe the role of, of a school board member as you see it.
Uh, the way I see it right now, um, is that a school board member should be there first of all, uh, to support the, the students and looking out for their best interests. Um, again, I think, uh, after that, you, you gotta look at what's, what's going on with the teachers and helping everybody to be heard. Right now, there needs to be a buy-in so everyone can be heard. Um, talking to some of the students, talking to the teachers, and some in the community. Uh, sometimes it seems like they're not being heard. So I think the Dayton Boards is, should be helping to bring everyone together to be able to work together, to be heard. The other thing I think that, uh, the school board should be doing is helping to uh, have a better understanding and a work, good work relationship with, uh, the superintendent that will be in place. To make sure that, again, the students are taken care of, that the students are being thought of first. Uh, I understand that there's a lot of workings with, um, you know, administration and money and things like that, but again, just like, uh, Will, Will said, uh, we've got to be student-driven and, and focused more on the students than anything else. Everything that we do needs to be for the students. Uh, so I think that's what the board is supposed to be doing right now. I, I am learning a lot, so um, I'm getting ready to go down to Cincinnati, um, and take a seminar with, uh, Advocate for, uh, Education Day. Uh, that's gonna help me to be able to learn a little bit more about the state level and the local levels of how a school board should be ran. Uh, because I just want to make sure that, uh, I'm on point, uh, when I become, uh, on the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Uh, Mr. Hayes, same question. Describe the role of a school board member as you see it.
I think a school board member's role is, uh, multifaceted. I, there's the, the stuff that's on paper, uh, in terms of needing to hire and determine the, the role of the superintendent, uh, and how they're fitting within the system, making those kinds of decisions for hiring and firing, how to use the budget. Uh, there's sort of those, uh, larger level, uh, roles that the, the board is supposed to fulfill. Uh, but ultimately, I think that a member of the school board is supposed to be there to act as an earpiece, uh, and a mouthpiece for the parents, for the community. They need to be, uh, the ones who are, uh, ultimately the, the best listeners uh, to the community so that they can take what the community is saying to heart uh, and turn that into action that's going to work with that community, uh, and, and work with it to build, uh, not only the schools and the environments for our, our students, for our teachers, for our other workers, uh, staff throughout the, the buildings, but for the community at large. Uh, they, they have an important role to play as models uh, for how to engage, uh, and communicate with one another, with the community, with administration, teachers. And so they, they really are, uh, a key piece to the puzzle when it comes to engaging with the community, uh, and, and hearing them and responding to them in ways where the community feels like they are heard and a part of the, the system, uh, and act as collaborators to, to build up.
Mr., thank you. Mr. Smith, same question. Describe the role of a school board member as you see it.
Thank you for the question. Think when you talk about this question, it's on different levels. You know, we have the, the boilerplate role that, you know, from the state they give you. And a lot of people see it as, you know, with our district, it's not just, uh, the superintendent and the treasurer, but we also have the, the hiring of the business manager as well in our district. And so, you know, you have that role as being the person that, that is that person that brings that person in or those people in. And you're also serving as the advisors for those, and you're also the policymaking arm of the district. But I think also when it goes into the board member of an urban district, it's similar to the district. Um, we do a different thing. You know, different districts have different barriers and different issues. And so in our district, we have to do more. We have to be those people that are out in the community. We have to hear what's going on, but then also you have to discern and see how do we carry out the vision of this district while also understanding that there are gonna be tough conversations. There's not gonna always be agreement, even within communities, there's not gonna be always agreement. And you'd never be able to do things if we're always saying we want to do everything that the community says, because every community is gonna say different things, and we have to understand that people put us in this seat to do that. And I think more importantly, as board members, you have to bring yourself into the boardroom. And that is what brought you there in the first place. The things you do in your regular life, the things that you have from your experiences, uh, the community connections you have, the people that you speak to, those should be the people that you also speak with. And then, uh, as a board member, I saw it as my duty to learn so much more about my community so I could see the full breadth of what our community has to offer and see some of the things that in this pocket of the community may be an issue where it isn't over here. Um, so there's a lot of learning that needs to be done by board members and a lot of understanding and a lot of caring. And then when it comes down to it, you have to be ready to make tough decisions that are about the students and the future of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Walker, same question. Describe the role of a school board member as you see it.
Thank you for the question. Uh, for me, it is, um, the school board is responsible for, like Mr. Smith said, the employment of the superintendent, treasurer, and business manager. And along with that, the policies, uh, for the district. I think what we have to take in consideration as school board members is the fact that the policies that are being set, making sure that they fit the student body as well as the employment of professionals in the district, um, to carry out those policies going forward. A lot of times we find that it is an urban school district, so we cannot be, um, like another school district that may be Kettering or something like that. We have to be aligned with, we face uh, low-income youth that are inside of a school district, but making sure that we are providing community resources and working with, in that chain of command with the superintendent, treasurer, and business manager to make sure that we have the resources available to provide, whether it's mental health support and things like that to the students which we serve, but also looking at the staff that the district hires to make sure that we have the dollars available to pay them the appropriate amount of money that fits within the role that they're doing, um, and not being too relaxed with that. Uh, for me, it is not looking at our higher-ups making the big dollars, but more so how do we get those dollars back into the hands of the educators within the classroom, the educators with, that's on the school bus, the educators that are in the cafeteria. Um, so as a school board member, I think we have to be mindful of those type of decisions as well that affects us every single day inside a district which we end up being charged with running.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to, uh, start with you, Mr. Walker, with the next question. As a school board member, how will you address parental concerns?
Um, great question. For me, it is, uh, we have to, Dayton Public Schools have to do more with regards to providing better support to parents for resources and access to those individuals. One of the challenges that even without collecting signatures that I constantly heard is I would call the district, I would call my teacher, my child's teacher, and I don't get a call back. Um, I'll go and visit and it is not the same information as being supplied on a report card. So also, we have to start taking our resources to the parents and not expecting them to come inside of the building for everything that we do. Dayton Public Schools, uh, a few years ago actually had, um, attendance walls where the staff, administrators went out into the district and actually knocked on doors stating, hey, you missed school this many days, how can we help make these resources more available for you to help you get back on track uh, with your education? But also providing with those parents more resources for them with regards to, you may have parents that may be looking at, hey, I don't have a high school diploma, I don't have a GED and things like that. How do we provide those within a district to provide that type of community support? But also, the district has one person that is charged with this whole community engagement aspect. How do we get that one person more resources to make that job more accessible to all buildings? Um, and it's not just one person taking on that workload. Um, so for me, it is how do we take the engagement to the parents and not just expect them to come to the buildings? How do we provide better funding for the department which works directly with parents? How do we allow more resources, uh, for the parents with regards to access to our downtown administrators?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Hayes, same question. As a school board member, how will you address per, parental concerns?
Well, I think this is one of the big issues that got me coming into running for the position in the first place. Uh, you know, as a parent uh, of two, two students at DPS, one of the things that I, I saw frequently, one of the things that I've heard from fellow parents and community members is just this consistent frustration, um, with just feeling like they're heard in the first place. And so I think it starts with creating better spaces, uh, as a board, as and, and working on down where the parents feel that they have a reason to be engaged. Uh, and, and really hearing what they say and bringing those concerns to the forefront uh, and acknowledging what they're saying in a way, uh, that they're going to know that we are hearing and acting on those concerns. And so I think just opening up and improving those lines of communication, I think is, is a vital first step, um, both from the board, uh, outward and inwardly. Um, but also encouraging, uh, all of those lines down, uh, from administration to staff, uh, to work on those lines of communication as well. Uh, and, and I think we have so many businesses and, and groups in the city uh, and parental involvement of people that really want our students to thrive. Uh, and I think that creating lanes that make it easier for them to do so, to come and be involved in those processes and then that communication. Uh, I, I think that once we start to model that strong communication and acting on concerns in, in really concrete ways that the parents can see that their confidence in the system is going to improve, which is going to increase their engagement and feeling of trust in that system.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Smith, same question. As a school board member, how will you address parental concerns?
Thank you for the question. Um, the way I would address it is the way that I have been doing as my time on the board during that time. The first thing is I listen. I listen. People know they can reach out to me through any kind of way. If you wanna reach out through Facebook, if you wanna reach out through my email, if you, you know, I was one of the few people when I first got on the boards, you can put my cellphone number on this business card. You can reach out. And I think that is one of the things as a board member, being able to be available to people. Cause there are times where people feel comfortable speaking to different people. Uh, secondly, understanding as a board member, bringing to the district ways that we can connect more to these parent parental issues. That's something that I have really pushed for. When I came on the board, uh, the position that Mr. Walker spoke to hadn't even been fielded. And so not only that, but getting that person, but then in that time, creating spaces inside of individual schools as well. So increasing those Title I Parent Resource Centers, increasing the, um, the people in the building that have connections, increasing the times that we've opened up for different spaces. Um, also creating equity when we talk about parental concerns. Um, and being honest about understanding that there are some schools that have more active parents, there are some schools that have parents that are highly engaged. Understanding that these things aren't happenstance. You know, as board members, you get four years to deal with things that have been in place, but you cannot always use it as a crutch. And so understanding that we're dealing with a lot of parents and a lot of community members that had traumatic experiences in school themselves. And so understanding how do we make sure that not only are this parent being heard, but they're being heard in a way that reflects value for that situation? Think you can't make it a cookie cutter thing. One of the things that I like that has been really embraced and pushed out is making sure that we reach out to our parents. Uh, some of the things that I've pushed for is making sure that when teachers and staff get emails, that they have a timeframe that they have to respond, making sure that we're responding in a way that is equitable and with fidelity.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dr. Bailey, same question. As a school board member, how will you address parental concerns?
All right, thank you very much. Uh, I concur with, uh, all of my colleagues here. Um, my, what I could say is customer service, customer service, customer service, customer service. First thing we need to do is we need to listen to what the parents are saying. Um, being in the community right now and the, and the phone calls that I am getting uh, personally and when I was getting signatures is that the parents don't feel like they've been heard. Um, so I think that we have to first listen, then we have to react to their concerns, because a lot of times, uh, they're calling in and nobody's getting back with them. So I think that's, that's one of the things that we need to address is making sure that we, we react to their concerns of listening and the, and then, um, acting upon whatever, uh, their concern is, making sure that, uh, they get an answer to whatever their questions are. Um, so the customer service piece, I, I think is, is huge. Um, we, we have to find a way to help them, uh, whether it be, uh, with truancy, with, um, their transfers from one school to another. Um, so again, I just say customer service. We need to be more friendly. Uh, we need to, uh, be more engaging. Uh, I think that we do need to be out in the community, to, speaking with the parents, uh, and finding out what kind of resources they need to be able to help them, uh, help their, help their child. Uh, so that's where I, that's where I am.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Uh, Mr. Hayes, next question. What do you see as the most important issues facing your school district?
Well, I think as a few of, uh, my colleagues here have, have alluded to already, I think COVID was really something that caused a lot of trouble, but it's something that really highlighted things that have already been issues. And I think that one of those big, big issues that it highlighted and has since highlighted uh, is, is the, the big struggle with mental health. Uh, not only for our students, but our teachers, our staff, the parents. Um, and, and I think that this is something that we really need to, um, continue acknowledging. It's not something that we've ignored, but I think that it's something that has not really been met with uh, the response necessary to really make sufficient action. Uh, and, and I think that, uh, mental health is something that we're, we're really going to have to push to the forefront more so than we have up to this point. Uh, increasing counseling, increasing training for staff and teachers, um, not only for recognizing when their students and colleagues, um, are reaching out and need help, um, but also self-care and understanding when, when they're showing signs of burnout uh, and, and those sorts of things. I think that a lot of the other issues that we have when we talk about high turnover and bullying in schools and a lot of these other big issues that we really need to tackle really have that, that problem of, um, insufficient care for mental health as a foundational issue. And so there are a number of things that, um, we need to continue working on, but I think that uh, mental health in the school system is, is certainly one of those foundational issues that we need to really focus on moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, what do you see as the most important issues facing your school district?
Thank you for the question. I think when you talk about the most important issue to me, it's really understanding that being in an urban environment does not mean you have to have deficit thinking. I think that is a huge thing right now, um, not only here in Dayton, but across the, the country. And understanding that we do have to get through the, uh, the, the responses that we saw through COVID, the, the data that we saw where there were drops in education all around. But I think understanding here, we have to be about the business of valuing education and preparing well-minded and well-rounded individuals for the future that is out there. So it's about being creative. It's about understanding that some of the ways that we teach children are not preparing them to be successful individuals. Uh, and Mr. Hayes said, if we're preparing ourselves to have well-rounded individuals, mental health has to be key. We have to have, make sure that we're making data-driven, student-centered decisions. We have to make sure that we're valuing our staff, because all of these things play a part in creating this system. So I think that, to, for me, the biggest thing facing our district is how do we create the district that we want to see without falling back on some of the old tropes of we can't do it because of poverty? Or we can't do it because we're in this community? And saying, how do we pull our community partners in? How do we use the, the collective genius in these, these buildings from the people at the very top to the people that are seeing our children from morning till afternoon? How do we make sure that we're creating the experience for them that also bring in their families? Creating the after-school activities, creating the programs that we just, uh, done at uh, Wollerman to Middle School and EJ Brown Middle School, where our students aren't waiting until middle, uh, high school to learn about career tech. You know, I spoke with a young teacher, first year over at Wollerman yesterday, and she's excited because she's teaching agriculture. You know, teaching our children things that get them excited, that bring in the parents. And I think that's the biggest issue that we face, and that's one issue that I want to tackle on the school.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dr. Bailey, what do you see as the most important issues facing your school district?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I, I agree with, um, Mr. Smith, um, with uh, the, getting the programs here to make these kids understand that there's more out there to do, but I really want to go back to when he said that. Everything comes right back to the mental health piece. Um, I've been, you know, as a police officer, as working with Samaritan Behavior Health and mentoring these kids, uh, these students, you know, it's, it, it goes back to that mental health piece. If they're not mentally stable, uh, then how can they get better grades? Uh, and I think that we need to really address that. It's, it's being addressed across the board, uh, in, in just about every job right now. Uh, and some of it stems from COVID and some of it stems from even before COVID. So I think the biggest thing is for us to be able to get our kids stable mentally uh, and then show them while doing that, also showing them that there's way more things out there for them to do uh, than just leave high school and just try to survive. You know, we've got to start educating them on, you know, what they need and what they can do to get to college, uh, college, military, or just being in the workforce. I remember being, uh, in the Dayton Public School System and, uh, going to the Dayton, uh, Career Academy where we had law enforcement, fire service, um, pharmacy, um, DATV where that started. Uh, so I think we need to be able to be well-rounded and be able to, uh, show that our kids that there's a lot of things out there that they can succeed in. Uh, and that even though they see that Oakwood and Centerville might be, uh, as I could say, being hyped up, they are just as smart, uh, they're just as brilliant as any other kid.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Mr. Walker, that, the last question here. What do you see as the most important issue facing your school district?
Uh, so for me, um, I would say yes, it's mental health, but I will also add, um, the, uh, the underfunding to the district with regards of when we look at school choice and charter schools and then public schools. I mean, that, that's one thing that our state legislators really need to be mindful of and take in consideration. Um, but also, um, I think one, another issue that we have is our students that, um, have these individualized educational plans, IEPs. Making sure that we are screening them correctly, um, and on time with those to make sure that we can see um, exactly where they are and how do we help them move forward. Um, another piece of that, then I would say, is the safety concerns that parents have, uh, within a district. How do we help move those needles, um, to be more of the positive instead of? How do we help move those needles um, to be more of the positive instead of the negatives? Um, another piece would be the achievement gap. Um, I think that what has to be taken in consideration is. Um, Dayton Public Schools is a um, socio-economic district. And it's like, we have to be mindful of the students that we serve, they are um, going to be judged. On a different scale than other districts, and I think that's something that we need to take in consideration and make sure that school board members. They were advocating for to be treated on the same level, if not on a better level across the board.
Uh, thank you, Mister Walker. In closing, we would like to give or provide each candidate one minute. For a closing statement. And Dr. Bailey, I'd like to start with you.
I wanna thank you, I had to mute. Thank you very much. Uh, I really, I just wanna uh, thank the other candidates for. Having the, the courage to even step up to become uh, a board member, first of all. I love these kids, uh, and I just want them to be better. I want them to know that their district is just as good as any other district around here. Um, I wanna work hard, uh, and I want to be able to bring the board together. Uh, to be able to get along with each other, to be able to make the right decisions that we need for the, the students. And sometimes that means we have to agree to disagree, but we need to do that respectfully. Uh, and when we do that, I think we have the best interest of the students and the, and the educators uh, at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Smith.
Well, first I wanna say thank you for everybody that was here today. I wanna say thank you to everyone that created this opportunity. Um, in closing, I really love this district. I truly love this district. I love being a parent of this district. I love being an alumni of this district. I love being somebody that just spends time in the buildings and talking to our students and staff. I think we have to understand that we are about the business of saving lives. In education, when we talk about urban education, we're about the business of creating opportunities and saving lives. No city can be strong with poor schools and no school system can be strong in a poor city. And so we have to make sure that we're strong uh, on each side. And I know we talked about the question earlier about the role of a board member. That is why it's so complex here, because we have to understand that we have to connect with people that may not even send their students to Dayton Public Schools. But they pay taxes that go to Dayton Public Schools, and they could be volunteers and they could help out, and our students are in the same neighborhood, so. I'm about these students and I look forward uh, to serving uh, on the board for the next four years.
Thank you, Mister Smith. Mister Walker?
Uh, thank you again, uh, Peggy, as well as to the League uh, for this opportunity. Uh, and to my uh, fellow colleagues on, on this forum. Um, for me, I would say in closing that I, I feel that Dayton Public Schools is on the rise. Um, Dayton Public Schools has some challenges, but as a candidate and potential board member, I'm ready to do the work to really help move that. Uh, needle forward within the district. Um, and starting with that is really engaging with the parents. I feel that, like Mister Smith said. Um, we have, if we're gonna have a great school district, then it has to be on the side with the city. The city is gonna be great, the school district has to mirror that as well. Um, because when we send our students into these buildings, we're sending them to another home away from home. So we wanna be able to. Uh, provide that comfort to them as well as their parents that we are here to serve and how can we better at this? Um, that is why I decided to jump in this race and I'm looking forward for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mister Hayes?
Yeah, thanks to all of you again for creating this space for us to come and, and talk. One of the big things that I keep hearing as I go and talk to people in the community and parents and teachers about. Running for school board and, school board in general, uh, the number one response that I get is we need something new. We need something different. Uh, and unfortunately, one of the things that I think is different uh, about me is. Uh, I, I'm one of the only folks with consistent professional education experience. Um, I, for me, that's, that's something that's really missing from the board. Um, and I see the students coming out of DPS in my classrooms. They tell me their concerns. I'm, I'm in the schools, talking with parents and teachers, in the community, talking with community members. Um, and I think that the skills that I have developed professionally over the years. Uh, coincide with a lot of the concerns that parents have about things that we need in the board. And so I'm excited to, to have a chance to join the board and, and affect that kind of change and bring something different.
Thank you. And thank you all for your participation today and good luck with your campaigns. The League of Women Voters encourages all candidates to run an issues-oriented campaign. Our goal is to educate the voting public and strengthen our electoral, oh, sorry, elective political process. The annual voter's guide will be distributed mid-October in the Dayton Daily News. AIM Media, suburban papers, and the local library, schools, and businesses. Early voting for the upcoming election begins October eleventh uh, at your uh. Board of Education, or you can request an absentee ballot. However you decide to vote, your opinion matters and helps make our democracy work. Thank you.